I'd like to call this meeting to order if we could stand for the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if you could take a few minutes and silence any cell phones or any devices for there to be any interruptions during the meeting. We would appreciate that.
Okay, we are concluding the order that's up there a little bit. We're going to start with the middle school transition update. Can you say it for me?
Yes. Salty, I was going to kill some lights here. Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Jess Straboni. I'm the principal here at the junior senior high school, as I know most of you know. And we're here to give you a brief update on some of our middle school transition team. So before we start, I'd love to introduce everybody at the table with me here. Go ahead, Pat, I'll let you start. Lucinda?
I'm Lucinda Carsley, Director of IT and part of the team.
Hey, I'm Kenneth, I'm the principal at the junior senior high school.
Lauren Malcoski, sixth grade teacher.
Joey Meredith, sixth grade teacher.
Yeah, you're a sixth grade teacher.
Awesome. So, we've been probably working on the middle school for a good year. We started back when Mark Graff was here. He was sort of leading the charge. And we had a small team of myself, Mark, Lucinda, Pat. Can you guys not see that? So, moving forward from that, we started with a small team to kind of get some of the foundational work done. And we talked about what it looks like sixth grade coming up and some of the transition pieces. And really, the big part for us is scheduling the sixth grade into our seven through 12 schedule. So we've been working with Bosse's, Bureyman Bosse's, on what you call a sandbox to help us kind of play around and see how things work. So we've done some really good, solid foundational things. And since then, we have reached out and we met with just the sixth grade team to sort of welcome them into the transition and kind of pick their brains on questions, concerns, anything they felt was important. We had a great meeting, I don't know, probably a couple of months ago. Since then, we have created the middle school transition committee. And we really opened that up to anybody who's interested. And we got our first meeting last, maybe two weeks ago with probably around 20, 25 people who are interested in the middle school, to be part of the middle school transition. Through that meeting, we discussed what a sixth graders look like coming up to the middle school. You know, extracurricular activities, their involvement, athletics, intramural programs. We've developed a small subcommittee that's going to work on PR. And we start pushing information out to the community, to the board, and to our faculty and staff. So, all in all, that was a, it's been a pretty, I think, a pretty productive beginning to our middle school transition. Questions so far? All right, slide two, if you can look at the screen, kind of digs a little deeper into what our middle school focus is. And what we're really doing is creating two schools within this building. Grade six through eight, our middle school, nine through 12, our high school. And some of the things that came up out of a lot of our plan is we really thought that the middle school would be great upstairs in this building. Six, seven, and eight. And through some of our team and committee meetings, we've created a map and room assignments that we think this will work well. We think we have space for all the sixth grade teachers to come up, and the seventh and the eighth. And our goal is to truly keep that middle school contained upstairs. With the understanding that there are certain things that happen in Eden Middle School, Eden High School, that will cause our students to travel the building. But we certainly have a focus on keeping them moving less and keeping them upstairs in the middle school as much as possible. Especially the sixth grade. Some of the focus of our sixth grade coming up is a STEAM focus. We really want to focus on the science, tech, engineering, arts, and math. So we're working on kind of neat, cool ways that we can integrate that. We're excited that when the sixth graders come up, it'll be a one-to-one initiative by then, so they'll all have Chromebooks. We think that's going to lend itself well to our personalized learning initiative. We have a team concept for our sixth grade. And we hope, as we phase it in with sixth grade, that we can move that concept into seventh and eighth as we continue to transition through the years. And if you look at the chart to your right, you can kind of see what the makeup's going to be of the sixth grade teams. What we've done to kind of keep our sixth graders moving around less than the rest of the building is we've created these academic blocks or periods. But if you look at Team A, we're looking at two teachers. The class is roughly 100, a little over 100 students. Periods one through three are academic blocks, so we're figuring 25 to 27 are doing ELA and social studies. That same number are doing math and science. Middle of the day, we love this idea of lunch, all of them having a common lunch. Having a specials rotation as a period, some 10-week blocks of some exploratories or specials that they don't currently get in sixth grades. So we're loving that idea that they can maybe see a tech, a fax, a health. And part of what we love about this, too, these exploratories, is that it helps us meet some of the middle school mandates that have to, that need to happen before the end of the fifth grade. And then it follows with another academic block at the end of the day. Sort of the flip of the morning schedule where we have three periods, academic block, and we've just included that resource AIS STEAM time. We're hoping for a possible, we're kind of noodling with the idea of a possible push-in STEAM concept where we may have a teacher go in and do some of the activities with the sixth graders. So on top of that, we go up some.
No, if you could just stay on that for a moment. If you could just share maybe some details behind the no bells on these blocks. I know we don't necessarily want to use the word block because we have different connotations.
Right.
And if you could also just talk some more about what is the purpose of a team? Because I'm not so sure that everybody sitting here understands the purpose behind the team. That would be great.
So the purpose of the blocks is we're trying to acclimate the sixth graders and keep them upstairs in that middle school as much as possible. So our goal would be to not have bells ringing every 41 minutes, but to give teachers that, pretty much that 41 minutes times three hunk of time to do their academics. Certainly some academic freedom in there and how they want to teach their classes. But we like the idea of them not moving real far within the building during those periods. Now, we've set up the upstairs, and we've already made all these changes moving to next year, where we have the sixth graders, pretty much our two rooms on this side of the hall and two rooms across the other side. And it's been a really nice kind of planning of rooms that is happening this year for next year, even though the sixth grade's not here. Jump into Lucinda, if there's anything I can add.
Well, actually, I was talking to Mr. Shepherd before the meeting, is that part of the plan is that we have no money in the capital project to do like remodel or whatever, but it would be nice to be able to freshen it out. Like, we've pointed out, we'll be coming to the personalized learning, which is the Chromebooks one-to-one. And we've been doing some research on this already. And that might mean non-traditional desks. And I think if you've seen some of what the newer classrooms are. So I've been already talking with the sixth grade teachers about trying to develop maybe some seating areas versus, you know, they don't need to be in rows and things, and you're, when you walk out, you're on devices. So I'm trying to be a little more creative and have some more collaborative area, which I'm going to transition right into. That period, four through six, that gives the teachers their lunch, gives them their prep period, but it also gives them a collaboration period, which goes right into the team. So that we're hoping that during those academic blocks, that they can have time to co-curricular activities and having that time to plan that during those periods every day, being able to.
Because right now, we don't have that time.
It also allows you to have a smaller group. So that Team A, which has two teachers, they've got that 55 to 55 kids. So they're going to be able to have that deep dive into getting to know those children and be able to address their needs a little more.
That was sort of our last bullet there, was the common planning for teams. And looking to phase this in as we.
This model here will also enable the teachers to get to know the student centers. Because right now, when the seventh graders come in, they have at least seven or eight different teachers every day. Every 41 minutes, they're meeting a new teacher. So the teacher only gets to meet them 41 minutes a day and really does not get to know the students or their needs. This allows the teachers to meet with the students longer, pick out what their needs are, and be more personalized in their teaching towards them.
Some of the specials are there below that grid. Art, computer, music, PE, fax, which is home, home acc or home and careers, technology and health. And these are just things we're talking about and seeing how they're going to schedule. We haven't really sunk our teeth into putting this into our scheduler, scheduling six through 12, but that's summertime.
That's a big bear. We've actually scheduled time in Bosse's to, again, open up that sandbox. And actually, now that we're getting closer, we can actually probably start playing with, quote-unquote, "real" kids. We kind of know who's coming at this point.
And I like what Pat said, because I really love the concept of a team. Because what we have at the elementary school, including sixth grade, is teachers who know their students well. And we need to bring that into our middle school concept, because it is a purpose of the middle school. Right now, what happens is students from sixth grade come up to a junior senior high school, and they come up to a seventh grade, and there's no distinction between seventh grade and 12. And so we really like this idea of a smaller team, where the teachers have all the same kids, and they're familiar with their students very well.
Any questions on this slide, any? So here's some of the things we've been talking about as a committee. We're liking this idea of some peer mentoring when the sixth graders get here. And we're thinking that it would probably work best if we could do it with middle school students mentoring the sixth graders. Talked a little bit, maybe freshman, freshman academy things, but it's just all stuff we're talking about and trying to figure out how that will look. But we think that's an important piece to the middle school and making our sixth graders feel welcome as they come up. And I think the peer mentoring would begin before they get here. Setting the kids down, letting them talk to those sixth graders, telling them what to expect. Just giving them a familiarity that I think the, would just ease their minds when they come up here. Looking at certainly parent communication. Not sure how we're going to schedule parent meetings, but we like the idea of inviting parents to an evening out, letting them pick our brains, letting them chat with us, showing them grids and schedules, and really making them a part of the process. We've been working a little bit with transportation, just some loose conversations around what really changes if sixth graders are on those buses. Do they need special seating? Are they okay with all the different grades? So that's certainly something we're thinking about. We've also talked about this staggering of dismissal times and other class changes. Six through 12 will be on the same bell schedule. Because we do share teachers, we have teachers that travel, it's sort of something that's a constraint that we just have to live with. But it certainly with the schedules doesn't mean we can't say, okay, guys and girls, you can leave a minute early or two minutes early to transition without 700 kids in the halls. So that's something we're working on, and I think we could do with, without any real issue. We're talking about being creative maybe with the first couple of days of school, bringing certain kids in, letting them kind of get an orientation at the beginning without all the other students here. And how can we make them feel comfortable in this building? So we're talking, with that first year, with the two grades coming up, we feel it's even more important. And so we're certainly working on ideas around that piece to the transition up. Really, we're excited to, it's been a fun project. We're really excited to be working on this. Our summer's going to be focused on working with Bosse's, working on scheduling, and probably a couple of meetings with the middle school committee to just keep talking about these ideas and making this thing as, you know, as successful as it can be.
I'm excited to see the sixth grade teachers here.
Yeah.
Do they want to add anything?
Well, just, we're, I feel like sixth grade is a great team. We've always worked together really well. We're really excited about coming up. And it's always been a little bit difficult to be sixth grade in the elementary schedule. Because we're always wanting, we can't do that, we can't do that, because we're not, now we have a more rigid schedule than the primary grades do. So I'm looking forward to it, and I guess we all are.
It was great when we met with the sixth grade team, because we wanted to welcome them. We had, you know, cookies and tried to like really smooth them. We were nervous they weren't feeling it. And they actually were so positive, so supportive, great ideas, this whole team has been great. And it's been, it's been great working with them so far and how we transition up.
And I think they will blend right in. I don't think they are really little kids. I think once they're there, they will just fit right in with everybody else. I know there are a lot, a lot of people are nervous about it. I just think it's, I think it will be very smooth. Thank you. Questions to the board, could they go? Okay.
It's seven, there's two teachers for each team. Does that mean there's only four sixth grade teachers coming in?
And here we come up.
That seems like 25 students per teacher is a lot. Does that, I mean, like, it feels like a lot.
And they had more. I mean, but that's what it is. It's what, every year, they lost a teacher for a grade level. So by the time we move up here, we'll be down to four.
Do you have five right now?
So the, basically, what they're sharing with you, it's a great question that Lori was asking, is he said that we evolve because the lower grades are smaller. I'm not sure what the number is at fifth grade or at fourth grade this year, but I'm pretty sure it's in the high eighties. So I don't know that that would be, it is probably 25.
I mean, for next year, we're all at about 22.
And that's hot. As enrollment, I'm telling you, that's actually a high estimate. That's if we get some kids in. Our number is actually probably closer to the 22.
Every year, it seems like there's more sixth graders if we've been over the summer though.
Yeah.
It's like, how we seem like.
My husband's a sixth grader.
And we've probably even touched on this, just one last thing before we wrap it up, is we're aware of lunches and PE. You know, our focus will be a middle school lunch, a middle school PE. We're trying in those areas where we know kids mingle more to schedule that so that they're with, you know, a middle school lunch, a middle school PE. And that's certainly at, in the forefront of our thinking in keeping those things, so we can keep our kids with their own age groups. So that's not lost on us. That's an important piece to this whole middle school, high school piece.
And the other side, when you're saying that like you're trying to get it eventually in the seventh and eighth graders, does that mean like the blocking too, like every period?
This, this is pretty much like when you do a team, you work with a team, and that's what a lot of middle schools do. And that's why you do that, so the teachers get to know the kids. So it would be more if you could phase that in somewhat similar to that. It might not look identical to that, but the teachers really want to be able to get into the team concept so they get to know the kids better.
And at the seventh and eighth grade level, you're not locked into those reading credits, so you have a little more flexibility with time.
Just to add, and I was, I, not for me, excuse me. I went to Iroquois, and when I was in the middle school, even though that was 40-plus years ago, we had teams for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, and that was our middle school. And we were in teams for all three grades. And I remember it very distinctly. It was great.
What were the name of your team?
That I don't remember. I can tell I'm a teacher at that time.
We had teams when I was in middle school. We were all punctuation marks. I was in sound by Colan.
We'll try to do better than that. We had teams that I was in middle school, like, not yet, but they were like three colors.
Yeah, so we're excited to let them pick a team name and create some identity. All right, well, as we move forward.
Thank you for taking the time to respond.
Thanks, ladies.
This one actually, you're sort of going to.
Okay, so, what am I saying?
Who's older?
Yeah, very good. So it's the Security for Smart Schools Fund, here it is.
So yes, you did just hear me talk about the Smart Schools Fund in November and at the beginning of January. So this is going to be our second submission that we've been preparing. And actually, this is from Mark here, because he's been working with me along with several of our contractors or whoever. This was not one that I could kind of do with just the team here at Eden. There's quite a few other people involved with us, because we will be replacing our security system and upgrading our phone system. Just a reminder, the Smart Schools Investment Bond Act is a New York State finance to improve educational technology infrastructure and improve learning and opportunity for students throughout the state. There are four focus areas. The learning technologies is which we submitted our first one for, for the pilots, for the GLP, and for the elementary school with the iPad minis and the Chromebooks, which are hopefully coming in next year at some point. The committee that reviews these only meets quarterly. They met last July. They did not meet in October. They did not meet in January. They met in April, but the list was so long, even though we were submitted, we did not get into the review panel. On, and you know this because I talked to Mr. Shepherd, it was on our budget vote day. They contacted me and asked me to remove our, a few things, and I did that. And I just checked right before I came, we are still in the review, keeping our fingers crossed, because the next time they're supposed to meet is July. So if we get into there, get approved, hopefully, we still will be able to move forward with our proposed plans for the learning technology proportion this year. So now, moving on, I just want to say our total allocation is $958,018. That money is there forever, supposedly. We don't have to spend it at any speed or rate or whatever. Our first submission was for a little higher, and that's why I'm pointing that out. I think we were at $295,000. With taking everything out that they asked me to take out, we're down to $265,000. So it's just a little bit of money. This new second submission is for $44,102, and it will be for security. That leaves us that we will still have $252,000, which is more than what our first submission is right now. So I'm hoping that if we need to go back here in a little bit, that we'll be able to go back maybe for some more learning technologies here in the next few years. Again, there's no time limit. We deem that we need to go back. We have some more money in the, well, so to speak. So, what is the security proposal? So, the capital project is currently replacing all of our district-wide, all of our switch closets. So basically, our technology infrastructure. They are increasing enough switches and drops and the wiring that we will need to replace our analog system with this security proposal and put in the digital security system. So, once the capital project finishes their stuff, then this project will take an effect and add on. My goal is hopefully by next summer, so that we'll be ready to go in the fall of 2018. Dave and I met with the company that's through Bosse's that will be doing this, for Bosse's support. We met for a very long meeting about a year ago with the principals, designing where not only to replace our old analog system, but to improve it with the digital, but also improve our camera security. We are woefully under video, I guess that's the right word, right? So there's some, there's some dead spots, which kids, hold your ear, is that right now, that we need to, we need to cover? So that's our goal, too, is to increase that. Along with that is, we currently do have a VoIP phone system that was put in in 2005. It has extremely aged out. We're going to be keeping our fingers crossed that it survives this next year while we're waiting one more year. We could put that in as part of the security, because this new system has features such as any phone in the district you can call, and will basically call a lockdown for the whole district. They also, the best way to tell you, you ever been to your doctor's office and you hear the phone speak as a PA system? In the capital project, remember, there was a lot more that we needed to get. One of those things was probably our PA systems in all three buildings. They're on their last legs, very nervous. Dave knows, my palm sweat, that they're going to die on us. Having this VoIP system will be able to send broadcasts through the phone, so it's an additional PA system. So it'll give us that extra coverage to be able to send those notifications to, or the lockdown or whatever. There's that code whatever going on in the building. So, I think I just covered everything there. Anybody have any questions about what we're including? Again, the two, the two projects are separate, but they go together. They're going to fit together. Mention one more finishes, one goes on.
What is the new phone system? Who makes it?
It's through Bosse's also. It's going to be through Aeneas, and it'll be Cisco again, so, yeah. So I had to get exact quotes, just like I did the last time. So I have exact quotes for both the new digital system, cameras, installations, which, as Dave's telling me, his people are not going to be climbing up and putting them at the tops of the buildings where we need them to be. But also the tear-out and installation of the phone system and the programming for both of these systems. And I think I explained what was already down there. So again, just to explain the process of being able to submit something. We started this with the first step last September by having our instructional technology plan approved last September. I also have to share this with a community-based committee, which I've been graciously accepted into the District Shared System Making Committee in October to present the first submission. And they've had me back every month, and I've kept them up to date where we are with that submission. And also, they've been carrying reports out on this submission. Presentation to the Board of Education. Tonight, later on, you'll be asked to approve the draft plan. If you approve it, I will post it to the website for 30 days, which I figure that's going to probably be the August meeting. Before the August meeting, just like I did for the other one, we'll have a open vote if anyone has any questions. I also have a submission on the website if I bring any, I think I have one positive email from the first time around to share with you. If everything goes well at that August meeting, you would vote that it's approved, and then I could submit it to the state the next day. If there's anything you want me to change, and that's why I say either August or September, we could go back and just repeat that process again till you guys feel comfortable approving it.
Lucinda, what do you intend to spend through the SCD timeline?
Hopefully, if they're quarterly, if they meet and they queue, they clear out the queue today, this July, and it doesn't get too big in October, possibly, we could be ready to go and get approved in October or January. Again, everything that we're, since we've already basically got the quotes ready to go, I don't think it would take us that long to get scheduled to get it installed. Again, my goal is hopefully, once the capital project has all the infrastructure in, that we'd be able to install it.
This, this is dependent on the capital project installation being finished, right? So having this in September doesn't do us any good.
No, no. So that gives us a little time. So, yeah, we, I, we won't be able to install this the earliest until next summer. And even then, it might need to be at the end of summer, because I know that some of the crucial work at the GLP isn't happening until summer of 18.
And I think one point from a financing standpoint, Lucinda, I've talked about this too, is really drives, we want to do it. You wouldn't want to start this work in February, because you'd be spending the money out of your, this year budget, you probably would not get the reimbursement from the state to the following year budget. So you really want to do the work at the beginning of a budget year, so you get that money in the same year.
So theoretically, even if they approve us in October, we might not go. So theoretically, even if they approve us in October, we might not go forward because this is a reimbursement program until purchase until July of eighteen.
Right. The last thing you want to do is take four hundred thousand dollars out of your budget in January and not be able to replenish it that year.
Well, and if you can't believe it, it starts running.
Right, to the current, most current.
And how long are this, are these good for? If it's a replacement program, it's always important for us.
It depends, it depends.
Five?
At least five, probably, with the cameras. This phone system, again, let's, let's do the math. Our, we bought our current system in 2005. It probably was end of life 2015, so I would say probably a good ten years.
Yeah, most voice systems are usually ten to fifteen years.
So we need to anticipate this cost in the ten, ten, fifteen.
And again, at least start planning it. I mean, even here, we've been talking about this for two years, and now hopefully it's going to happen here. So to be at the thirteen year old, so, yeah.
Listen, you said they didn't meet in October, January this past year?
Yeah, that's kind of scary, isn't it?
Well, if it happens again this year, you know, you're looking at...
Yeah, not till April, but still, April would, if we're, during the queue, we're successful, we should be okay. Worst case, July, and the system doesn't get installed till early fall anyway. And there's a possibility that they don't meet because they need to slow the process down because they don't have enough money to fulfill the orders that are coming in. That is also a possibility up at that level.
Any other questions?
All right, well, thank you, and I will be back in a moment.
Thank you, Cindy. Moving on to AMC Capital Project update.
Well, actually, we're going to do two things. One is a catch-up on something that we did, which was another expense. Okay. Recall that we did this pipe lining process for the cogeneration plant. And I'm happy to report that the work is done, and it's working fine. So I was asked to put a presentation together for you so you can kind of see how the whole thing went together. So basically, what we did was empty out the piping, opened it up, washed everything out, sent a camera through, dried everything, and if everything worked the way we assumed, we essentially were going to save about thirty thousand dollars by putting a lining in our existing pipe rather than replace everything. So we had two one-hundred-foot sections of six-inch pipe that needed to run glycol, which is the cooling material for the generators, at roughly a hundred and ninety-five degrees. And that water runs into our heating system here at the high school. So the process is basically, the liner is laid out. They calculate how much resin they need to put into the liner, mix the appropriate proportions. They prepare the bladder by sealing one end and putting a pull, a pull ring on it so that once it's installed in the, in the pipe, they can pull it through. They mix the resin. Basically using a funnel, they feed it into this liner. They saturate the liner in about eight-foot sections. And that, what you can see on the pic, the photo on the right is where that resin is actually saturating the liner itself and it starts weeping through to the outside. And they use basically linoleum rollers, and they just keep working that resin throughout the entire length of that piece of, of liner, from one end to the other till it's completely saturated. They fold the edges in, in twelve-inch to eighteen-inch increments, and they tape it up. Then you basically slide it into the pipe. Once it's slid, slid into the pipe, they take compressed air and they inflate the bladder that's inside of that liner and allow it to sit overnight under pressure, roughly around twenty-five to thirty pounds pressure. Once dry, they re-image and video camera and return the pipe to service. And there's one slide that isn't there. So basically, what I, what I'm telling you is that we're very happy with the installation. We're very happy to let you know that it's working. We're not leaking glycol anymore, and the process worked very well.
And saved a lot of money.
And less heat this option, girl, hopefully, or not.
Yep, they didn't have to shut the school down. So that's the process. The company was real happy to see me take all those pictures and put this together because they wanted to use it on their website as well. So the second thing that I want to talk about is capital construction. And... I want to remind you as we go through this that some of the pictures you're going to see are probably a little saddening. Is that a good word? Will make you sad because of what's going on. And I want to tell you that whenever you start tearing things apart and you know it in your own home, it's kind of a gloomy situation. But you look at what the far reaches are and what you're trying to attain, and it's all worth it in the end. So this slideshow is going to run itself through, and at the end, I'll take questions. And each slide will last approximately five seconds.
So Dave, we're seeing pictures of current conditions?
You are seeing everything from when we started. Those were staging areas. That's the bus garage offices. We're doing brick pointing. That was a classroom yesterday. As was that. As was that. That's the locker rooms in the elementary school, the shower areas.
And those teachers put their stuff.
That wasn't that brown yet.
That's, that's the lobby, that's the phone booth. That's the arch going to the second floor. That was the phone booth.
And we saved it.
Well, it's...
It didn't come out well.
No, auditorium. New gunners going on the front of the building. A small roof that's being replaced. Repainting the front facade. That's one section that's been finished. That's going to be the high voltage line going from one building to the other. That was the leaky brickwork before, during, the reason it leaked down into the hallway, and after. Swimming pool, reason the tile was buckling.
And still buckling.
The chimney that was ready to fall down has been repainted. Badroom. Chorus room, no risers. That is one of the, our set of practice rooms. That's, I think, what we call the strings room in the back. Auditorium, pay attention to the lights on the left versus the right.
High school?
Yep. That's what the new lights are going to look like once all of them are in. That was the loading dock. That was the football field. Drainage. More drainage.
Our hopes is that the storm management system up on that hill are going to solve some problems down closer to the baseball field and...
Concession stand? Yep. Concession stand. More drainage that'll be laid out on the field, under the turf. Some replanted trees, those are the trees going up to the existing football. Pay attention to this slide. Okay. Why? Now I'm going to show you. That was that piece of dirt. That's the retention chamber for all the water that's going to come off of the football field. This was a big issue with a lot of the farmers.
Which comes off the gins, right?
Primarily, what's going to come off the football field, right? This is a time-lapse camera. That we were going to send, the same thing that happened to North Collins. North Collins didn't put this in, so when they put their field in, they ran the drainage from that right into a creek, and it flooded a lot of the businesses and homes downstream. So by putting this in here, this thing is going to hold over thirty thousand gallons of water, and it's slowly going to release it. Now, I'm going to just...
Hey, what's the one that's further down to like, right down here that the town was concerned about?
On the softball field?
Yeah.
That's, that's the lines that come over from Weller Development and run across the field, hockey field, into the woods.
That's the layer of the farmer's...
Well, the same concern applies there. So we had a meeting here where we, the board, talked about having bigger pipes, if in fact it would help save our field. But the concern again was, what's you going to do with bigger, with bigger lines down here, surefire.
So where does this slowly...
It'll empty into the same spot. It empties back into the woods.
But slower.
But much slower. There's eighteen inches of, of stone underneath those little quantum huts. There's eighteen inches of stone on top of them.
So your time lapse camera shoots a picture every five seconds?
It's roughly, I've set it up to twenty seconds because it's just chewing up my hard drive space.
That's why, that's where all the dirt's coming from.
It was a hell of a hole. So that, just to give you, that, that bulldozer's driving on top of them. That's how strong those things are. So the, the point of this is, A, that it's there, and B, that we realize that we can't plant trees on top of this thing, or you're just going to plug it all up.
So, Marlene, that's where you and I sat for the baseball game, wherever that is.
So we have, we have cameras up there that are taking this time lapse of what's going on. And I'm trying to capture as much as I have been able to, including the refreshment standing built, the field being scraped off, and all the dirt being hauled up and things like that. And ev, excuse me, eventually what will happen is I'll work with Young and Wright, and we'll basically take all of this video and stitch it all together into one real nice video that kind of shows the progression of the entire process of what happened up there. So, but I wanted to, I wanted to, A, give you a, a little bit of flavor of what's going on. Again, remember, we, we got rid of the students yesterday, and today, we already had about a third more contractors here, and come Monday, we're going to have probably three times as many. So there's an awful lot going on and a whole lot more that's got to happen, so... I will answer any questions.
Can you go back to the original PowerPoint? And see if there's questions on the original PowerPoint?
The, which one?
The first one you showed.
The, the, the piping?
No, you can, it was the original, they...
The actual PowerPoint, okay.
The classroom, the...
The staging facility, the bus garage.
And let's just go picture by picture and see if there's a question.
All right, that's the high school staging area. This was the office where Mary Banco and Patty Bowe...
And this is where you're putting HVAC system in because they were getting the exhaust out of the mechanics.
Right. So there will be fire-rated walls and properly constructed offices put in there as well. This is where Sherry Stevens' desk was adjacent to the driver's room. Again, pointing throughout the, all the buildings. This was Jen Walker's room?
It's a fourth grade, so we call it the master office space.
And this was next door to Jen, who's in that room.
It's the front.
This is Barb Cook's room.
Wants to become the main reception area of the master office.
Yep. Just so you know, I gave her ceiling tiles.
I was just going to ask you if that's why they're emptying.
She is building a wall in her home with those ceiling tiles. As a reminder.
Did you really?
So she asked me if she could have them, and I said, sure.
She's building a wall in her home?
The kids drew on it or something.
They were all painted.
We don't normally get parts of a building away, so...
That was her retirement. Well, and the reality is, the way the contracts are written, the contractors will pull them out and throw them out. So at least they're going to a good use, and I've already talked to them and said, hey, look, whatever tile is left, you're not throwing up. I need attic stock, so... Okay, this is, there were the boys and girls showers. Now they're being joined together to create a huge storage room for the portable bleachers for the gym and for all the materials that are no longer in the current storeroom because it's going to be part of the district office.
Thanks for clarifying that. He said the girls and boys showers are being joined together. Just two thousand and eight. You're funny.
I won't tell you the way pool was when I was in school. Okay. So obviously, the elementary gym has seen some facelift already, painting, glass backboards. Gym floor is done, but not done right. So I'm forcing them to redo it. I'm not happy with it. The final finish coat was not good, so it's going to be a delay in that being a finished area, but we have time right now, so...
Can you go up on the wall for the ingred stock and just explain what was in there?
Okay.
There's four of them.
There's four of these little things. So I talked to Carl Walker about...
Yes, you did.
Okay, about coming in and painting Eden, E-D-E-N, one, one letter in each one of those because there are four of them. So he's agreed to do that. We bought the paint, and he'll do it for nothing, and that'll be one of the final finishing touches once everything else is done. So that, that gym will be a very nice gym when it's finally finished. And again, we, we're going to have some portable bleachers that'll be used in this gym, probably along this side, to, A, give the parents and, and visitors someplace to sit, and B, to try and keep as much of the, you know, the filth that they drag into the building at least contained to one side. Okay, this was the ticket booth and the phone booth. Everybody hoped that everything was going to come out modular, but it did. Back when this was built, it was built in place. So there is a pile of the lumber sitting there. Some of it will get repurposed when this opening is closed up and this paneling needs to look like this paneling all the way across this opening.
So the reason for closing up that opening is so that visitors can't come in and go directly upstairs until they are allowed to go. So it adds an extra security layer to the lobby. And then the kids will come straight down the stairway and out where the old telephone booth was.
This'll, this'll be a big opening right here, which is that. So that'll now open up into what is the lobby. The auditorium, they're already setting scaffolding to pull the ceiling down so they can...
That's the elementary school, right?
Right. So they can put the HVAC ductwork in there for the, for the new system, so it can be reconditioned. Um, so they can put the HVAC ductwork in there for the, for the new system, so it can be reconditioned.
That's been an interesting room to do too, because it's really a historic site, so you can't just do what you want.
Right, there's a tremendous number of architectural elements, they have to be counted in. A lot of the gutters that were ripped off of the building are being replaced with new copper gutters. This roof we're doing is a time and material add because the shingles that were on here, the slate shingles, um, basically what was happening is the ice and snow from the roof above was coming down and destroying these, it was, slate is very brittle. And if you hit it, it will crack, it'll break, so we're working with the contractor, they're gonna put ice and water shield on this roof. The sub, the, the sub roof is fine, all the sheeting is fine, and we're gonna put a synthetic slate up there, which is basically a plastic material. Um, we have some on other parts of the building already that, that match up pretty well, so it should be fine. Hope preserve that.
The front facade looks really good.
Yeah. Yeah, there's the guy that's painting it, he's doing a pretty good job. Originally, that was all wood, now it's basically styrofoam. Most people would never think back what it is. And the same thing with this, this, this actually is a huge piece of styrofoam.
You couldn't see that before, why didn't you get one? I couldn't see that.
Well, observe the one, like, I'm envisioning-
They, basically, they coat it with concrete. And that same, if you look around the building that the, I don't know, I guess it was because grates were a very problem at the time this building was, was built. That same grape theme is in a lot of places in that building.
In the front foyer?
The front foyer, and up in the plastered cornice, up in the library, and obviously, the, the gateways of the building. We are running all new power wiring to connect the elementary school to GLP, high voltage lines, so we currently have lines that are buried underground out here at the street that are not in conduit and not encased in concrete. Now they will be on our property, encased in concrete, and in conduit.
And this will put the bus garage, GLP, and elementary on the grid.
And this will put them, all three buildings on the grid. It's back there. That piece that was missing?
It is?
It's back in place. And obviously, everybody remembers that this hallway, when we got the right kind of rain down here, we had twenty-five or thirty buckets. Over the years, this, this brick wall was sealed, it had all kinds of issues, um, and it was one of those things that I was really happy to see happen. There's that chimney that was falling apart that comes from the basement where the boilers are for the pool and take care of the gymnasium. So that entire wall was taken down from the, the brickwork was taken down from the very roof, all the way down to the, the roof deck down below. And the reason that the water was seeping in is because this flashing was not sealed against-
Is that looking down?
That's looking down.
So the water was just going in between the flashing and the brick?
Correct. So new flashing was added, it was, um, as, as well as new insulation, the flashing was terminated back at the cinder block, the way it should've been, and all sealed back up. And that's the finished wall.
So, so that quarter's not done because there was a cracked base, right? Is that one?
One we're coming to?
Yeah, the one right there, the sun, above the chimney. Go left.
This? Yes, this is the, the corner by the swimming pool, there's, there's two issues. This is a steel beam, and this is a foundation wall, and what, what you see has happened is that the water has gotten in between the brickwork and that foundation been, been able to freeze, and it's actually cracked that whole section out. So, we've had a structural engineer come in, he's taking a look at a way to fix that problem, to re-support that beam, and then this wall will be bricked back up. Again, there's that chimney, they still have to put the cap on it, but at least that's done. The band room, all the acoustic tiles were taken off and replaced, the carpet is gone. Um, all the asbestos and mastic and anything that was associated with any of that work has been removed. Same in the chorus room. Kinda interesting how concrete changes over time. This is where the risers were versus the area under the carpet. All the walls that were between these offices, those are gone. This was the entryway, there was a practice room over here, storeroom, that room was removed. The door going in here will be removed, and a double door will be put in place so that they can now move the grand piano in there. Those are the practice rooms that you enter from the hallway, and the windows go, you can see into them from the band room. This is the small room that is between the hallway leading to backstage of the auditorium, and these were-
With orchestra?
Yep, yep, this is, this is where those practice rooms are. There's one office that remains back over in here.
So, the wall in between the, like, back rooms and the other upstairs stand?
In the auditorium, the lighting is gonna be changed from incandescent to LED. These three fixtures in the back of the room were converted so we could see the difference, the light level, and see how well it dimmed and worked. Um, we'll be using roughly about a quarter of the power that we now are currently using to light all of the fixtures in the house. It produces a brighter light, a wider light, um, at the seating. And I took some of the students that were in there for a study hall and put them in that area and asked them whether they liked it, whether it was too lary, too bright, whatever. They said it was fine, they said it actually was a little better because they could see the books that they were working out of, so... The loading dock, um, this is one of those projects I'm happy to see get finished because this one was concerning me for quite a long time. We never had the ability to unload a semi without putting in a homemade aluminum plate, and now-
That weighs about how much?
Yeah, the, the plate itself weighs probably around three hundred pounds. But the point is that when you would take a ton of copy paper and bring it off a semi down that plate, it was pretty scary.
But our guys were having to manually lift it, and then we'd put it down, pick it back up, store it. So it put a real restriction on, on anything that came or went out of the building. So this'll have a hydraulic lift down there.
Correct, there'll be a plate that would go up and down and be able to adjust different, different heights of different vehicles. This was basically at the start of the project, um, when they mobilized and they started cutting away the hill back here to make room for the brokeback track and the track and field events that are gonna, excuse me, that are gonna take place in that area. Long jump, high jump, those kind of things. That is that same area. This drainage is basically, um, right where the scoreboard is, and will extend out for the shot put and the discus cage areas, so those will drain off, which we, that's an area we don't have now. This is the area where the electric line is going to come from School View up to this point, where there'll be a pad and all transformer, and then feed into the concession stand, which is-
You said the-
Go ahead.
What is open?
Can I grant you?
That's the, that's the driveway.
This is, this is our driveway.
Right.
This is, um, let me see if I can, this is- Going to the baseball fields?
Yeah.
It's actually back here.
So can you go back to that one? Because the only reason I want you to do that, yes, I wanna talk about something I've only had a chance to talk to Paul about. So, this is not on COGEN, and will be coming on the grid as well, so we have to bring lines to, to the concession stands and the field. And so, there was some conversation about how that electricity was gonna get to the concession stand. The unfortunate pieces is that National Grid made the decision that they were gonna go talk to neighbors over on Merrill and tell them that we were cutting down trees, and that the district itself didn't wanna bring the line down on this side of School View, which is totally inaccurate, if I can quote David, it's an outright lie, right? Right, outright lie. So, so we are currently working on bringing the power from across Jennings, putting a pole on the corner of Jennings and School View, and then running the line underground on our side of the street to maintain that tree line on the other side of the street. So in talking with campus today, that's where we are right now. We will not be coming off of Merrill, we will not be cutting down trees, and it's really unfortunate that, that the workers from National Grid chose to, to create a situation that's not true. And I'm very grateful to the owner for providing that.
And you, you, you do need to know that we own fifteen feet the other side of School View Road. The school district does own that. You have to remember that when the high school was here, that road didn't exist. So, when the road was put through there, it was intentionally left so that there was property on the other side to prevent driveways and things from exiting onto School View, interrupting this flow of traffic to and from the school. So the concession building is, uh, finally has a concrete floor. Um, all the services were put underneath, I have pictures of those, but that isn't much exciting. But, um, at this point, what you're looking at is basically, let me see where I'm, where I'm at. This is the garage in the back. Up front here is where the concession area is. These are the bathrooms, there are three of them, a family, a men's and a women's bathroom. And in the middle is a small utility room. And this'll be the, looking from the football field to the concession area, there will be a porch, there's, these will be pillars here. There will be a porch here, and a couple doors here to get into the garage as well as to the concession, concession area itself. So we roll up doors and counter and that kind of stuff, so...
Gas line, I didn't see the gas line there, or?
It's, it's there. It's, it's not there, but it's there.
It will be, it will be there, not currently.
It's, it's there.
Plum jet.
So it's not plum jet, but it's gonna be there. What you see here, these, these rolls are basically flat drain. So once they get all this graded out the way they have to, we're gonna start laying out this flat drain and then doing lifts of stone in very, various grades. The flat drain will be laid basically on a diagonal and feed into these, what look like cinder blocks. They'll run around the track, and that's basically the conduit for connecting, um, the water system together. These trees probably look a little familiar because those were the trees that went up to the football field, and they, uh, kinda look nice running along that driveway.
They do, people like them.
And again, this is where that whole water retention system is. So this'll all be graded back down a little bit toward the baseball diamond, and then, you know, we can certainly add some trees back in here eventually, because Eric is-
So David and I thought that it's been moving at a fast pace, but we're assured that come Monday that we've not seen anything yet, so...
It's gonna get really, really busy.
Question about the Martin and I find a baseball field on Jennings. What is gonna become of that?
We have a meeting on July tenth for people to get together to talk about what it could or could not be, what the cost could or could not be, because it's not part of the original project. Um, so we've right now saved a large shale from the field just in case that field doesn't get, um, increased. David's submitted a possible drawing to come back toward the field as opposed to come aside along, along Jennings. And that dirt can create, some of that dirt can create burns, but it's not a, an ice slope across the road. But, so there's a meeting scheduled for July tenth. Just like Tommy Kirby, Ron Nags, David, me, so.
Exactly, and I know when they have games there, you know, people are parking up on Jennings, and that's dangerous, because I don't open the car door up one day when we're getting on a car, you know, it's a forty-five mile an hour road. Extremely dangerous.
And the signs have gone up on the other side of the street from now parking, so it already creates a issue. So we're gonna attempt to address that issue with that. Good question. Questions for David? Nice job, David.
Thank you.
Item three, request to withdraw specific items from consensus items. Moving on, item four, routine action. Approval of consensus items, recommended motion that the following consensus items be approved as listed in the administrative memorandum A group.
Second?
No, we have to see R. Where is X?
R.
Do I say, is that one that, that's, I was looking-
Should it be A through R, do you think?
Is, that's the new one?
I probably get some-
No, that's part of the budget transfer, so it's now due.
So let's do A through R.
Okay, so, remove, uh, or approve, uh, the items listed in the administrative memorandum A through R.
Second?
For the discussion? All in favor? I oppose, abstain, motion carried.
Uh, this is the, uh, time where the board, the board is designated to receive statements from individuals and groups. The board will review all statements and respond appropriately at a future meeting. All persons in attendance are required, sign the attendance sheet and designate the representation status, example, parent, teacher, bus driver, chamber of commerce, et cetera. There is a limited time limit.
Do I want one?
Moving on, item five, business. A resignation, recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the designation of the director of finance, Thomas Murphy, be accepted effective July third, twenty seventeen. The board and administration wish to thank Mr. Murphy for his four years of service to the district.
Second?
Discussion? All in favor? I oppose, abstain, motion carried.
Tom, he was four years ago, not having been a business official, but having known just about every answer to every position around there. Through some pretty tough, um, transitions, and so, thank you. We came in all together, he came in on voting day, sort of budget vote in two thousand thirteen. And Tom was on to Queen Hill, party line five. Yes, okay, thank you, and good luck. Item two, accept resignation. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of cafeteria monitor Deborah Dins be accepted effective June twentieth, twenty seventeen.
Second?
Discussion? All in favor? I oppose, abstain, motion carried.
Item B, appointments. All appointments will not be effective in service to the district pursuant thereto shall not begin until there has been compliance with statutory and regulatory provisions for fingerprinting certification and clearance for employment, are the recommended motions. Number one, appoint an elementary teacher. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Danae Lamarca, sorry, was initially certified in Students with Disabilities one through six and Childhood Education one through six, is hereby appointed to a probationary position in the elementary tenure area for, uh, probationary period commencing on September first, twenty seventeen, and ending on August thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, unless extended in accordance with the law. This expiration date is tentative and conditional only except to the extent required by the applicable provisions of section thirty twelve of the education law. In order to be granted tenure, the teacher must receive composite or overall annual performance, professional performance review ratings pursuant to section thirty twelve D of the education law of-
Don't breathe, just continue.
Don't breathe, just keep breathing.
Of either effective or highly effective in at least three of the four preceding years. And if the teacher receives an ineffective composite or overall rating in the final year of the probationary period, the teacher shall not be eligible for tenure at that time. Salary is based upon ETA contrast master step one.
Any questions?
Do you know what grade she's teaching?
Lauren, do we know what grade today's teacher is?
Danae is going to be in first grade.
And Danae is here? I'm waiting. Well, that would be true, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Long to target it.
Seeing no further questions, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Now we've. Which is really nice of you to come. And her dear friend, I forgot her name, I'm sorry.
Alana.
Alana, so that's really sweet that they both came.
And we stole her from the Buffalo City School.
So welcome to my.
Did you say stolen or rescued?
All right, did we, did we? You did.
Yeah, you did.
Oh, no. Item two, appoint long-term substitute teacher. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent Joshua Walker, who was initially certified in childhood education through two and one through six, be approved as a long-term substitute teacher replacing Carol King from September first, twenty seventeen to June thirtieth, twenty eighteen. Salary is based upon master step one.
Second. Any questions or discussions?
Joshua would be in kindergarten?
Yes.
Agreed?
Oh, okay. And he is also here.
Oh, yay!
All right, seeing no more questions, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Now we've. And Joshua has also been in and out with us in multiple positions this year.
All year.
Yes.
All year. And Josh's dad is here, sitting next to him, whom some of you may know. Um, used to sit on our school board, how many years ago?
Uh, I've been on a bench eleven years, so eleven years ago.
Eleven years, I understand yours is.
I had chef's position for a while.
Actually, it was more than eleven years because I think, Mr. Walker, you were on the board that hired me. And I was fourteen.
Well, I was nineteen eighty-something.
So congratulations and welcome, Josh.
Thank you.
And thank you for this year. We know we've put you through awful lots.
And if it's okay with you because they all have to be at work tomorrow, I'm going to.
Yes, be home. Be home. And leaving. Bye, everybody.
Thank you.
All right, number three, appoint summer.
Just got it wrong, you know. This is not nice.
There you go, it's time.
I told them to always.
Yes.
I'm going to talk, I'm going to begin talking. Point summer AV computer cleaners. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following be appointed as summer AV computer cleaners effective July one, twenty seventeen. Until completion, salary is nine seventy per hour.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item C, approve temporary labors for summer twenty seventeen work. Recommended motion that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, three summer labors to be hired for a total of nine hundred hours for additional summer work to accommodate the ongoing capital construction.
Second. Discussion.
So primarily, uh, these people that we're hiring for this summer will be responsible for moving classrooms. So most every classroom in the elementary school is being moved for one reason or another. They're trying to set up for, uh, the following year here at the high school. And then also GLP has some moves to accommodate some construction, um, and also some tech work. David, is there anything else you want to add to that?
Yeah, they're going to be very busy.
And you're hoping to start as soon as possible?
Yeah, as soon as possible. There's two applicants, I believe, you may be looking at tonight, that I would like to get on board just as quickly as possible.
Because we've got moves starting next week already.
Well, it's already started.
Yeah.
It really has.
Again, July one.
I saw someone down at the receiving dock yesterday trying to find boxes and one of your guys said, there's no more lunches, therefore there's no more boxes. You've missed your time.
Yeah.
Is this coming out of the capital budget or?
This was built into the, into the project. Next summer too, because this will happen in Lawrence Building next year.
Further questions or discussions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item D, approve security for Smart Schools Bond. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the draft of the Smart School Investment Plan be approved as presented.
Second.
Discussion or questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item E, approve district code of conduct. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the twenty seventeen eighteen district code of conduct be approved.
Second. Questions or discussions?
Yeah, I just have a few. I, I do believe that you're going to see this code of conduct come back up at the July fifth meeting because there are a few other, uh, recommended changes that our students themselves have made. And so in wanting to recognize, uh, what our, what our students have become involved with and been courageous enough to come forward, we're going to bring it back to you on the fifth and possibly daily or more when we know something. So can you just talk a little bit about that? We have to approve it here tonight even still, so.
The, all right, do you know like the dress code?
Mm-hmm.
So I gave a presentation, um, at the, like, very end of this year, like the last week, to the shared decision-making team. And we brought up, um, different vocab to use for the actual dress code. Um, I believe the specific words that they came up with will be presented at the July meeting. But we're just kind of trying to find more, um, respectful, up-to-date vocabulary to put in the inventory.
We appreciate you taking the time to do all of that. So, so Ms. Menkena will come on July five or Mr. Servoni. So I'd encourage you to speak up or come on that, will you be here?
I'll be at Girl's Day.
Oh, good for you.
Thanks.
Excellent. All right. So it'll come back on July five, um, and we'll come back up for its thirty-day wait. And then in August, when we have the meeting report, you can take a look and choose to approve it.
What is an example of the vocab?
So. No, we were trying to, we were trying to take, so some of the things that they say now are, um, appropriate, like the word appropriate, but a lot of people can take, like, you can't really define the word appropriate. People take it differently. So they were using, like, specific words, like referring to, like, your body, like. I know some of them that said is like, no cleavage, no midriff.
Back, front, side midriff.
Yeah, back, front, side midriff.
Because our codes now allow for back midriff, front midriff.
No, no clothing that has been altered to reveal any of those things. So like cutoffs, like, can't wear those. Um, but, you know. Tried to like eliminate the word appropriate.
Do you think me and you are getting on?
Well, that makes sense though. It's appropriate because kind of what's appropriate.
Yeah. That was the, that was the big push is the, um, the word effective and how, the way that it's being enforced. It's like a lot about what happened in the meeting. Half it was like enforcement. The other half, a lot of people were arguing about the, um, the strap rule. It said an appropriate strap length of one, width of one inch. So they were trying to change that to a shirt must have straps or sleeves that are not like pulling their shirt to be revealing of like, image or midriff.
There's a whole billboard of pictures.
Yeah, so we, so I had a presentation, I had like a PowerPoint presentation and then Mrs. Clark helped us create like a.
Who's one of the biggest enforcers of the, of the dress code?
She's, she's one of the biggest enforcers of the dress code because she's one of the biggest enforcers of the rules. It's not necessarily that she agreed with them, but that's her job. So she's not going, not following it. But she helped us make this billboard type thing, include tons of pictures on half appropriate and half not appropriate.
I think it's great for when you guys approach it.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. Uh, I would make a recommendation too, that you're senior, so it might be something that you can pass on is to do that in February or March next year before she comes to present to the board. And then they only need to conform it once. So just put it on every year, because you can get them all.
Yeah.
Other questions or discussions?
Um, I heard at the shared decision meeting, there was, um, next year is a trial for backpacks. There's a, so the shared decision making team said they were going to add backpacks.
Because, because the tote bags that the kids have been using don't hold all the books. And they hurt huge children, so I have heard this as well.
They did, at the dress code, we needed, um, pocket backpacks. And they said that had already been.
That's already been in this code.
Yeah.
But there are certain parameters for.
There's smaller packs, not the bigger packs. That, with that, she brought up at the last meeting.
Yep.
Very good.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item F, approve bus use for Eden Kindergarten field trips. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, transportation be a school bus or buses be approved for the Eden Kindergarten summer field trips for summer twenty seventeen.
Second.
Questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item G, accept Hero's Grant from Hamburg Lowes. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the Hero's Grant from Hamburg Lowes valued at two thousand five hundred forty-one dollars and eighty-one cents, which will include the building of a community garden at Eden Elementary. The supplies and volunteers that will work with the team of GLP volunteers be accepted.
Second. Questions or discussions?
The exciting thing about this is that our elementary school kids now travel down to GLP to work in that garden. So by putting this up at the elementary school, they'll be able to stay at their own building, work in their own garden, and GLP will get the benefit of a garden that's already in place. So it's really exciting. What I will come forward to the board this summer with is a possible MOU to add two volunteer, or to add two advisors for GLP so that K through two can work their gardens and that will come out of the grant from Senator Gallivan, who was last year. So it's more possible to just look at the useful way to grab.
What are they looking at, putting this garden?
Don't know because, uh, there's not a whole lot of light over the elementary school and the problem right now is the construction project, so. Kind of behind the building. Where, um, because I know you guys have been working with David. We're kind of behind the building. Um, there's already two small beds there. All like over where Kelly Grimaldi's is? So, so it's the El Cove.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Facing the Legion. There's a water source back there and. That's not, thank you, I didn't even see it.
Is it good enough sun though?
Not as much as they want, but some.
It'll be okay, David, it'll be okay.
It'll become a competition.
We're just cutting down some trees.
This is the last, like, that's not the way to leave us.
Stick down, stick down, break it down.
Is that on recording?
All right, seeing no more questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item H, approve increase in position. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, that point eight-three FTE special education teacher position be increased to one point oh FTE.
Second. Discussion.
This is to accommodate the bubble at sixth grade. But in return for this, uh, there were two aides that, um, were going to be hired. Um, I had promised from Sean that in place of that, there will be one. So hopefully that's the case.
Aren't the two aides taken out of the budget? The budget process?
But you also had some.
Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item I, approve accessing of music department equipment. That upon the recommendation of the superintendent, music department items be accessed and disposed of as the district uses appropriate. Most items are in poor condition and have no asset tags.
Second. Questions or discussions? All in favor?
Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Item J, approve appropriations. Increase that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the twenty sixteen seventeen appropriations be increased by three thousand eighty-four dollars and two cents to twenty-nine million four hundred fifty thousand four hundred eighty-four dollars and ninety-five cents to account for increased revenues.
Second.
Discussion or questions? All in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained, motion carried.
Uh, now on to information and proposals, the business report.
Fine, very short, very simple. Last year we talked.
He says so, but I'm sorry to myself.
Last year we talked about tax collection, it was one year. And you guys need to talk if you want to do it for next year. I'm gone.
But it has to be decided by when?
Um, you guys need to give direction to authorize. I need to talk to Mrs. Arvin to see if you guys want to do it. It needs to happen by the reword meeting.
Well, this, our, this is the conversation.
You need to look to see which way you want to go.
So what we've done is we've done one-year contracts with the town before. I would share with you that we are still in a position where I don't believe taking a lot as a district is in our best interest, um, at all. And especially right now with the little capital, capital project. It's close. And with the new director of finance. And with the new director.
We don't have to keep it to one year because the.
You could do two years.
Yeah.
You could do two.
I would think that would make sense. You could do as many as you want.
Do whatever you want.
I would say at least two because that's one of the technical improvement projects.
And then address it in two.
And, and then take a look at it.
Also, if I'm a director.
We could have two years. So then we'll put that on for, uh, the fifth. Thank you.
Is there something you can get to, please?
I do need a.
If she's willing to do it.
And willing to.
Wasn't there a software upgrade last year? If they're, they're talking about.
They did.
They did.
I might keep that to. All right, item B, superintendent's report. So the Michigan State survey is up on the top of our website. It's primarily a dissertation, hmm, survey by a gentleman at Michigan State's doctoral program, taking a look at the political side of, of three-day assessment opt-outs. So while the district itself, um, has no, uh, purview in this survey, what we did is to send out a school messenger to our parents and if they choose to go to our website and fill it out, they do. We don't send the link to them, we're not trying to push it. But if in fact parents want to get involved, if they, they can. Um, and it's open until the end of June online. SED minimum one hundred and day attendance. This is a really big, big deal. And so in keeping with SED, they sent things out in April and wanted to take effect right away. And so what they did is to state that half-days for kindergarten can no longer gain state aid effective sixteen seventeen and seventeen eighteen. And everybody went crazy saying, but wait a minute, we already did our half-days this year. We can't have it effective sixteen seventeen. But the guidance is out for seventeen eighteen and beyond. So they're not saying we can't have half-days. And we currently contractually do seven to eight half-days in a school year at the elementary level. We've cut them back at the high school level for many reasons. But at the elementary level, at least three of them are upgrading. And we do a really good job with our elementary teachers of making sure that they're having conversations and, and making sure that it's very more behavior and standards based. What SED is stating is, is that if you have a full-day kindergarten and you have a half-day attendance, that you can no longer claim state aid for kindergarten. Well, that creates a problem for us because one, it's a contractual issue. And secondly, I'm not going to just bring in kindergartners for the full day when everybody else is going home half-day and then just have kindergartners on the school bus going home. Because kindergarten's not required. It's not, it's not a, um, it's not a mandated grade. It's not. It's not a, um, it's not a mandated rate. And state doesn't want to pay for something that's not mandated. It's my suspicion. It's my personal feeling. I have not gotten any answers yet. Um, beyond that, we can manage just about everything else that comes out of it. But this one, um, has gotten in the way of our calendar. You have approved a calendar for next year. We are ready to order our calendar that goes home to parents for next year. This this number two is going to require us to get back with the union and negotiate. Try to figure out how do we do professional development on seven days? So in September, we have a date that's scheduled for APPR, which is really important for our teachers. We have a half, two half-days scheduled in January for parent-teacher conferences. I don't know how to do that in any way. And so, um, unfortunately, our ca- our calendar is either going to come out with no half-days in it or it's going to come out with half-days that aren't right because we can't have half-days. So we're still trying to figure out what we can get done before the last day of going to primed-on calendar. But this is a really, really major issue.
Did you see anything about half-days at the elementary level that furthering regions?
Yep. So we can manage that if we can figure out how to do the half-days for kindergarten. And we can just simply like, like we just had a half-day at the elementary school this past week. So we would just move it to the week before. That's all. But I can't move it to the week before and keep kindergarten all day. So I mean, in order to keep kindergarten all day, to me, to me, even if the even if the district took on the expense of keeping kindergarten and bringing in subs, what you would have is only kindergartners on a school bus going home and not getting home at the normal time they're ready to go home at. If in fact you were to compress those bus routes to three or four buses, you'd now have drivers with only kindergartners on a route they don't know, with kids they don't know, and only kindergartners on a bus getting home at odd times. It's just, uh, it's an absolute nightmare. But guidance did come out today that we have to follow it for 17, 18. So I will be bringing you a calendar for approval once we figure out the issues here.
What if you don't follow it? What's the?
They won't pay you state aid. It's worth about $22,000 to us.
For just those half-days?
Just for kindergarten for half-days.
So what's that dollar amount in fact roughly?
Well, our foundation.
$3,000 a day?
Well, our foundation unit as a whole is $35,000. It'd be proportionate, so we'd have to figure that out, so.
But we what we did figure it out. I know Tom likes, Tom wants to do a specific number. I can do to me about $3,000.
So about $21,000?
For seven days.
For seven days to renegotiate contracts, worry about.
To not renegotiate.
Right, well, yeah. I mean, so you you start looking at all these costs that are now going to come to effect to accommodate these seven days. Is it really worth the $21,000? Is the question you 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 need to start to look at. You know, you do you then take on the liability of the bus routes then? And.
But there may be some other way for us to do what we need to do.
I mean, even if you pared it down to maybe it's a four-day conflict. And then that comes just down to $12,000. You know, that might be the avenue you take versus.
We may also be able to do early releases instead of half-day because you just have to meet the minimum hours. So there are some things that us can talk about.
I mean, I'd be more in favor of looking at that instead of a complete.
If you adjust the penalty, and there's more than just penalties. If you like adjusting, even if you bring in a couple buses to take the day its own, it's still cheaper than not paying you with loops. So it really isn't so much a financial, it's all the other things that have become into play that are you willing to forgo.
No, but what I'm hearing now is take the loss.
Take the loss.
Or some of it is.
Right. So I mean, if you compare that down to a four-day loss instead of seven, now it's $12,000 loss. That's a lot cheaper than renegotiating, bringing on additional liabilities, the additional bus runs. You know, you start looking at it and.
And if these kids are coming home at different times, it's going to be different.
Well, that's the whole liability thing that you start running into.
People got for their parents getting.
You just don't know what time the bus.
So you know, you just bite the bullet and say, hey, we're just going to lose that that $8 for those days.
So one of the things that we might be able to do once in a few days too is to do early releases and supposed to have days. So if you have five-hour minimums, five-and-a-half-hour minimums, that's not considered a half-day. I I basically told our district superintendent that for Eden, it will basically get rid of half-days because in fact we try to keep our state in that. So I'll come back on July 5th. We'll answer for you. The closing school here has been super busy, so we really haven't, we haven't had a lot of conversation yet. But I appreciate your time. End of year ceremonies have been an awful lot of fun always. Pre-K graduations, second grade ice cream parties, um, two dump takes. Kelly's been in the dump take with me at elementary school, Lauren at GLP. I must say though that Kelly's was much more agreeable because Mark Stevens warmed up the waters. But the first GLP undergrad was ice cold coming out of the faucet. Um, it's just, we got really lucky with our with our weather. It's just although we could get rained on in GLP, it was it was really a lot of fun. Mary Mango and her kids came with their animals, which was a lot of fun helping Kelly because I was wet, didn't see all. Amanda helped out, which was really good. What else? What else was going on? The animals, the dump thing.
Artful crafts.
Artsy crafts, games. It was just.
The storytelling. The face painting was something new this year.
The sponge soaking station.
The water soaking station. And some of the high school kids went down to help out, which is really. Did you go?
Yeah, I did. I ran the like, they dumped the sponge in the water and throw each other.
The face painting, a neighbor came to my door to show. Sure. JJ, I would. No, my my class loved the face painting. They just, they just loved it.
Your class in particular liked getting me wet. I just wanted you to know. And so there was no explaining to her class that they had hit the target. They just simply figured out that if I just walk up, they would push it.
You were agreed for.
Right? There's no point in trying to hit it. I can do it better this way. This is a really, really nice end of the year, so we're really excited about that. Um, you saw a lot of slides from David. We will be moving his district's business office, I believe. We've landed in the second week of July. Um, I appreciate the labors that you approved today so that we can actually get boxes out because right now, um, baby league Bob is doing most of box moving. And there's just no way we can accommodate on our own. But the location of the Board of Education meeting is beginning in September. We shall talk about come July, uh, because we won't have our odd done in September, but maybe we'll have it in elementary school done by October. I don't know.
I don't. They they're saying no Christmas concerts even.
No Christmas evening at this point. So we made this end up staying here.
Initially, they said that they were trying to have it open by December for the Christmas concert. But Dave backed me up. They're saying January now, maybe February.
It'll be a while.
Which, um, no, the elementary. So and part of that is trying to maintain that historic sense of ceiling that we're required to by by by, it's not ocean, David, is it?
York City.
Shippensburg.
Shippensburg. My guess is we're going to keep that board meetings here.
Yes.
Questions?
No, my just my thought was with the auditorium, you're going here.
Yes.
Something you have to make a do for Christmas concert here.
Yes, that's what we've done this year too, is we've just been bringing everybody here. Been an amazing amount of reorganization. Then, uh, beyond that, that's not up on the board is, um, I'd just like to out, I'd like to acknowledge our two outgoing board members, Michael Burns and Mike Breeden. Um, Mike Breeden, I'll start with, who has contributed six years. Longer than me. So Michael, thank you.
Thank you.
Andrew Hoover. I want that displayed in my house.
I won't tell you what room it'll be.
And from Michael Burns also, Michael's going to move the board for five years, even though I've been.
Five and a half.
And a president for three, and so.
Thank you. I enjoyed it. Thank you very much.
Michael has a plaque, and I'd like you to know, this is the second print of this plaque. So if you want the first one, it's in my purse. Because I, oldest time, thought that you served two, three-year terms. And so, and I've talked about that for four years, right? And I was informed on Monday that you came in halfway through the first year. So we have, so if you want the original that says 2011.
You can keep it. Well, you just scratch it out and put Paul.
And then also, I'd I'd like to take a moment, I need those, to recognize two students who truly had me thrown. Um, Maureen and her, is she twin?
Yeah.
Thank goodness, Bridget. Because I would walk up to Barb and I'd say, is that Maureen? Because it really looked like you but didn't, right? I didn't realize that you were twins. And so, um, and 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 sometimes Bridget would sit in for Maureen. And and so we had two cards, one for Maureen and one for Bridget that the board has signed. We absolutely love having student representatives. We've loved having you because you speak up.
Right.
And and that's the point of it. And I can tell Haley's already going to do that. And so would you like to introduce Haley before I cut off the beginning of this?
Yeah, this is Haley. She's great. If you like to meet Tom Gil and Haley. She has, she has a lot of like really good things.
So I'll give you this for Bridget because I'm pretty sure Bridget was here when you were not. Although I can't remember because you looked the same. Okay, so thank you. And that, so it's around here.
Okay. Um, I just want to let the board know, last night I met with the North Collins Rod and Gun Club, and they're interested in starting a trap shooting, uh, program with the school similar to the girls hockey team where we won't have any financial, uh, concerns about that. They're going to raise the money. Um, they're going to work with the boosters. That's going to help them. There are grants out there available for this. Um, several districts around us have already done this. And this is also could lead to getting a rifle team here, um, also, which I think would be a big plus for this district. A lot of districts around us have the rifle team. Some of the students that go out for the rifle team or for trap shooting are students that don't go other, out for other sports. Um, there is money at for college scholarships for rifle. Um, actually, some of the articles I read said it's easier to get a scholarship for being on a rifle team than playing football.
The match.
So and we're talking big schools like Ohio State, uh, Texas U, um, some big schools that give people sometimes free rides for just being on rifle team.
So we know which schools are teams, like Holland is a team.
And a club.
And a club.
They have.
Pioneer is a team but not a club.
They're going to start a club.
They'll start a club.
And Springville is working on a club.
Excellent.
Um, so there are a lot of districts. Um, so I will share this information with Marissa. Uh, I sent a sample letter that the superintendent from Holland sent after the board approved it. So basically what it is, is the board needs to approve it, um, without an advisor. So there is no money involved. There is insurance certificates that are, um, presented to the school with the school's name on it. On a primary and a contributory basis. Mm-hmm. Right here I have two copies, thank you, that you can look at. And, uh, that's the Holland's, uh, school district. It stuff those are samples. It doesn't have the Holland School name on it, but the one they have in possession. And it doesn't, it doesn't have that on there, so we'll.
Hold on to it.
Yeah, yeah, that's all. Yeah, so, um, so this is something that I will share with Marissa. And it'll be coming up maybe in the July meeting, um, as far as, uh, getting this approved so they can get it started. They have coaches already that are willing to volunteer their time. They have.
The North Collins Rod and Gun Club?
Yep, they have kids. Yeah, there won't be any coaches from the school or anything like that. They have kids that are interested in starting this. Um, they're quite excited about this.
What's unique, my understanding is, who's not home in away games? You shoot, you shoot at your home range. And that by X time, you have to submit your scores while the other team's shooting at their home range.
So then the transportation and the travel.
So the whole conversation we had about guns on buses and all that nightmare is not, you're always shooting at your home range. Guns are stored at the home range. You shoot, your score matches the other team's score because they're shooting at the home range. And then a winner's declared, and that's how it's standing. That's how it's all. So it's pretty neat and solved an awful lot of the concerns that we had that we couldn't really figure out how we could make work, so this will work.
Yes.
What season is this?
Winter.
Winter.
And if they, at Holland, they've been able to coordinate it where the kids are able to also compete in other sporting events at the school. And then they practice after school, and then they go to the range, um, like the North Collins Rod and Gun Club will have open. And all their fields are lit there, so they have the capability of having practices later. So it does not interfere with students that want to participate in a sport and a club. So.
Would it be like a varsity sport?
No, it would be club.
So any, so seven through 12.
Um, there are age limitations, but right now at Holland, that's what they have, is like seven through 12.
And club, so there are some club, just like, um, traveling club. There's so much of that concept. Hockey is really a school sport, so it's really not.
Well, boys hockey is.
Boys hockey is club.
Yes, girls hockey is team, so just so many boys hockey.
Surely it needs to be club, but now it's.
And I sent you guys an email about the date of the 25th. If you have any questions, I did have some additional training that I can help you with that. And we will, um, be scheduling an executive session next week also. Um, I will be contacting you guys to see when it works out the best. Yep. Um, so that if you have the report done by the 25th, then we will have an executive session that we need to finish it up for you this year. So if you have any questions, feel free to contact me and myself or email me and I can explain if you have any problems.
Anything else I want to?
And one other thing, I've been working with Lysenda a little bit on the phone system. With, we're hoping to be able to, when we get the new phone system, when we put somebody on hold, we're hoping if we can get the rights to the music for the school here, that we can have our own students' music on hold.
Also thinking about this for.
I've been trying to work on it with Bosse's and, uh, I called Bosse's and then the superintendent had called Bosse's to say that I could talk to Bosse's where I work. They wouldn't talk to me. Doesn't that sound like the organization we work for? So anyhow, if we can get the rights, it would be nice if we had, uh, somebody put on hold to have our own students, you know, kind of promote our own students, uh, you know.
They can do their own PSAs on hold and.
So. That's all I got. Anything else from any of the other?
Yeah, I I'd just like to say thank you. It's, uh, it's, it's been, uh, a good six years. You know, we laugh, we cry, you know.
Your kids were.
We wrote short stories.
Be careful what you say. I'm the next person.
I know. When you cry a lot. And you beat your head against the wall, so make sure you know how to repair a shoe rock. Um, but no, it's been a great experience. Um, it's, it's, you know, thanks to the administration, the teachers and and such, it's the help. I mean, it's not an easy endeavor, especially for the incoming. It's, it's, it's a difficult time, um, in the, in the state, not only near district, but it is a difficult time. We've done some good things here in the past six years, and I, I know you were paired forward and do a great job. So it's been a pleasure working with everyone. And I'm kind of sad to go. I know I'm happy too. Especially when they're, they're taking the session.
You know, there is one's.
I know. I'm fake sick or something for. My mom's calling. But, uh, no, I want to thank everybody. I, I enjoyed the time.
Thank you for your time as work and as vice president, and you certainly said, uh, thank you.
Should have been president, you could have applied. Right now, I'm doing.
Because it's.
And the right saints are on there. They got white out for you. Anything further from the board?
I was just, again, saying what I can to say. I really enjoyed this. And, um, I look forward to still being involved and I think I'm grateful making this an enjoyable experience.
Okay.
And I've called on mic several times for help and advice, and I am continuing to do that. So I appreciate what you've given me. Thank you, sir.
On future dates, could you just share with me who is not here July 5th?
I'm going to be videoed in.
You are. Not you. Don?
I'm here.
I should be here.
Long school.
She's all your own cafeteria? All right, we do, that happened, we do really need to be in the cafeteria.
You were in the cafeteria.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you.
It'd be better than the last time though, right?
No, seriously, Don was, last time was great.
Yeah, that was great. No, I meant your last.
Pittsburgh that one.
No, we have a new system.
I love the Zoom, that one.
No, well, I showed it at one point.
That was rough, boy.
Okay.
Anything further?